It is six o'clock. We're gonna open up the public hearing for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update in Climate Resilience Element. All right, does anybody have any, any questions before we get going? Is anybody in the audience, I didn't have anybody sign up, but is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak regarding the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update? Any questions? We can move on to the other questions for then.
No, I just want to thank Devin for all the time that they put into this. I mean, this has been going on for, what, a year now, I think? So, I mean, it's a lot of work, so I sure appreciate all your work.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, it was very informative.
Anybody wish to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak regarding the 2025 Complanned Update? You may unmute yourself and speak at any time. All right, hearing done, I will close the public hearing at this time. Open the closing meeting, we do have a call, would everybody please stand for the flag slogan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have an agenda. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda. We need to fix the vouchers. They're going from three hundred and six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents to three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. For a clerical error with Rodney. He was late turning some stuff in. And then we need to add number twenty-five, the PPC Solutions Ain't Security Service Agreement.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna go into executive session at RCW four-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero. Four probably, I think twenty minutes should suffice. Reset the meeting at this time. Okay, we're back from the executive session, we're resume meeting now. We went in under RCW four-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero, no decisions were made. Moving on to old business, does anybody have anything for old business? All right, we'll move on to Mayor's comments. We're experiencing some wetter-than-usual weather. If anybody needs any sandbags, the Fire Department out here on Karen should have them available. I know we're pretty, for the most part, dry, but sometimes water will come off the hills and build up in certain areas. So if you need anything, Fire Department is the place to go. If you need any help, reach out, you can call City Hall, you can call Fire Department, or 911, or other non-emergency numbers would be best for this. And we'll see what we can do to get out there and help you. And unfortunately, Friday night, we had an accident in town here. And I want to remind everybody that riding motorcycles is extremely dangerous, especially in the wet weather. So if you're gonna ride motorcycles, please obey posted laws, be safe, wear a helmet, just be cautious, please. Counsel comments?
I would like to say that I wanted to thank, I'm pretty sure I saw Sally over there, but whoever decorated the little dog park over there, it looks really good. I know there's other people who helped with that. And also, the fire station Santa this year was the most amazing Santa Claus display I've ever seen. And we have eight kids, okay, so we see Santa a lot, right? He was so good, they had it all set up, it was beautiful, they had hot chocolate in the crop pot, they had presents for the kids, ornaments to take home. My kids drilled that Santa Claus with questions, and he answered every single question. He knew quotes from movies that you wouldn't think that he would know. It was amazing. So if anybody feels that they want to go next year, make sure you find out what time it is. Please go, please donate, so they can help with that. And on that note, there's always lots of volunteer work in Winlock for everybody out there, especially with all this energy in the room. If you really get to do good for your community and help out, go up to the elementary school, help with kids who need help reading, help coach a team, help volunteer clean up parks, you know, donate money. That's all you can do, and that's all I have to say about that. Merry Christmas.
All right. I just, I want to thank the county crew, the cleanup crew, and, you know, Kenny and his crew for cleaning up. The county's all over, throughout the county of Winlock, you know, cleaning up side roads and stuff. I mean, I see them all over out there, doing an amazing job in this sunny weather, picking up trash out of the pitches, Kenny and M., James, them all out there in this nasty weather, thank them all.
All right, any other counsel comments? All right. Moving forward, we will go into department reports, Police Department, Chief Valentine.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief. November twenty-twenty-five, this follows. One abandoned disabled vehicle, two accidents, four agency assists, one alarm, two animal calls, nine attempted contacts, eight civil calls, four dispute disturbances, one theft of firearm, one harassment, one info burglary theft, nine info general, one juvenile problem, one lost, missing, found person, two noise complaints, two property lost, found recovered, one runaway, two suspicious circumstances, five suspicious person vehicle, four traffic other, one theft, and two warrants, one persons. November twenty-twenty-five for Toledo, one animal call, one attempted contact, three civil calls, one dispute disturbance, one fraud scam offense, seven info general, one shoplifting, one suspicious circumstance, one suspicious person, suspicious person vehicle, and two traffic others. Nineteen-two for Toledo. Any questions?
Great work, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Be safe out there.
All right, Jackson Civil, Devin Jackson.
Evening. Hey, I have a couple items. I want to start off with the treatment plant screw press project. I'm sure Rodney's kept everybody informed. We went out to bid, received three bids, a pretty decent spread. The ranges went from six hundred and forty-four thousand seven sixty to nine seventy-five, seven eighty, the middle of the road being about eight twenty-five, or eight oh-six, seven sixty. Eight twenty-five was the engineer's estimate. Unfortunately, the low bidder, which was significantly lower, was not deemed responsible in their criteria. They missed the mark, didn't submit certain forms, and generally didn't have the needed experience. So we provided you a memorandum summarizing this, these numbers. We recommend we take the low, the second low bidder, Roggins, out of Aberdeen, Washington. I've worked with actually both the low and the second low, they're both quality contractors, so I'm confident in their work. So yeah, the recommendation is Roggins for eight oh-six, seven sixty. Are there any questions? The next item I wanted to touch base on was, just give a quick, I know we had the public hearing, but I want to give a little bit of background on the Comprehensive Plan Update. Largely, it's in response to House Bill eleven-eighty-one and House Bill twelve-twenty. Eleven-eighty-one is climate change related, and twelve-twenty is housing. As a part of this, the state has provided grant monies for the community to do quite a bit of analysis in regards to climate change and usable lands analysis for the housing. We, for the climate vulnerability assessment, we looked at exposure to natural hazards, sensitivity to degree of the built environment and social systems, and the community's resilience and adaptability to perceive climate threats. One nice thing, since the community is smaller in size, you didn't have to do greenhouse gas emission analysis and tracking, so there was savings in that regard. Well, it's a lot, it's a little less onerous than some of the bigger cities we have to go to. In regards to the middle income housing, HB twelve-twenty, we looked at the available lands and, you know, the current zoning to see how, what our capacities are to accommodate all income levels as the city develops out. The good news is, there is a surplus in most metrics, so we have a surplus in both housing as well as commercial. So Winlock is sitting very well in regards to being able to develop out the infrastructure, support, or develop housing that would support the jobs and generally draw in, you know, quality development. Obviously, a lot of this, I think one item we noted is a lot of the industrial lands are held by two landowners essentially, so there's a bit of a risk there. But I know there's a focus in the downtown corridor revitalizing that, which would further open up commercial growth. Are there any questions on that real quick in regards to, I know this isn't supposed to be a Q and A, but that's a lot. Okay. And then the last, I just wanted to talk about, well, second to the last, so Arden is wrapped up. It went well overall, things are draining, which you know is great considering the current amount of rainfall we've had.
Draining good.
Yeah, solid project, we're working on close-up paperwork with the contractor, the TIB. No major, no major issues of note. And then along the lines of the TIB, it may have been mentioned, I believe at the prior council meeting, that the city was recipient of another grant to update ADA ramps and some stormwater as it relates to ADA improvements, largely centered around the schools. So improving the pedestrian access for folks around that trip generator. That's all I have.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. All right, at this time, we'll move on to public comment, agenda items, limited to five minutes, please state your name for the record. I didn't have anybody sign up. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak for public comment? If you are on Zoom, wish to speak. Yeah?
Hello, David Lowery, I'm assistant here at Winlock. I'm in several of these meetings, it's my first time speaking to you all, though. The meetings, I haven't been able to attend, I attend online. Just wanted to let you all know that your jobs are not easy. Attending several of these meetings, I understand there's a lot of stuff that gets put on the plate, and a lot of things you have to do, and decisions that have to be made. A lot of folks have been a lot more involved in the process these last few weeks, due to one decision that's gonna have to be made that may not be easy. But you all know the work you do, and you all know the work that is required of your job. So do what you think is necessary, despite what folks who may not be fully educated on the matter might want to say. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak? If you are on Zoom and you wish to speak for public comment, you may unmute yourself at any time and speak. All right, we'll move on to public comment, non-agenda items, limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? If there's anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, you may unmute yourself and speak at any time.
Mike, did you want to talk about what you were gonna talk about last week that didn't get to?
Too much hate going on inside the house.
Okay.
I choose love.
Do you like a candy?
All right, anybody? All right, we'll move on to agenda items. Approval of Winlock Comprehensive Plan and Climate Resilience Element.
Do you want to do?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I messed that one up, thanks, guys, keep me on track here. Consent and approval of vouchers for December eighth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. An approval of minutes from November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Any questions regarding the vouchers or the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent, agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, first up on the agenda, approval of Winlock Comprehensive Plan and Climate Resilience Element. Any questions for Devin regarding this?
No, I just want to thank, you know, Devin and Robert, don't want to forget Robert.
No, it was, it was put together well, a lot of information there.
And I don't think a lot of people understand that there's a lot of stuff that goes into this, and not only is there a lot of stuff that goes into it, the information that's in here, there's grants that we can't get or do, because if this information isn't up to date or in the direction the city wants to go, then we can't get certain grants, so. I'll make a motion to approve the Winlock Comprehensive Plan, Plan and Climate Resilience Element.
A second to that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Winlock Comprehensive Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, screw press bid acceptance. You heard Devin's recommendation earlier on going with the second bid. I think based on his report, it makes sense.
And they were really close to what, you know, the engineers. The engineers, I mean, it shows just how well the engineers, you know, bid it out, and they, they almost hit it pretty on the mark.
A concern that we've seen in the past is sometimes a low bidder, if they don't, if they haven't done the work before, sometimes you'll get change order of the death, and it ends up being right up there anyways, oftentimes.
That's what scares you when you take the low bid, and it's like, oh, they're right.
It shows they didn't meet the criteria.
Can you help me with a memo for?
Doesn't sound familiar to me.
Not to my knowledge.
I make a motion to accept this group press bid from Rogginlins Inc. for eight hundred and six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve Rogginlins Inc. out of Aberdeen's bid at eight hundred and six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for this screw press. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we need to set a public hearing for the Benaroya Development Agreement. I have spoke with both Devin and Robert. The suggestion was the first meeting in January, so I believe that was the twelfth.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the Benaroya Development Agreement for January twelfth, twenty-twenty-six at six o'clock.
A second. I have a motion and a second to set the public hearing for the Benaroya Development Agreement for January twelfth, twenty-twenty-six at six o'clock. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, standards liquor license renewals for Guadalajara Family Restaurant and the Club.
I see no problem with it.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license renewals for Guadalajara Restaurant and the Club.
A second. I have a motion and a second to renew the liquor license for Guadalajara Family Restaurant and the Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, public defender contract renewal, J. Embiid and J. Clark. Not surprising, fees are going up.
The email included says why they're going up.
I have a one question.
What is it per unit right now?
I think it's three hundred right now, and then the first year, it's a two-year contract, the first year it's three thirty-five or three thirty, and the second year it's three seventy.
So is each year increasing three-five dollars of a price?
Yeah. And I think it's been two years since they, I don't quote me on it, I think it's been two years since they gave us a price increase.
I think so, I don't remember giving them much yet.
And it's a two-year contract?
Correct.
Does the council have questions about case weighting? Or if it's, you know, burn it?
If you feel intrigued or explain.
Yeah, I'd love to hear what you have to say about it.
Quite simply, the Washington State Supreme Court passed new rules for defense attorneys. You only have so many criminal cases per year, whether it's a felony, whether it's a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor. So every court is allowed to weight different cases. So simple cases, maybe like, you know, public disturbance versus a DUI, they're vastly different, a little bit more complex than the other. It might take a little bit less time for a public defender to work with the defendant who's charged with, you know, yelling too loud outside, public disturbance versus someone who is in charge of DUI or maybe something more serious. So the case weighting system is instead of treating each of those cases the same, like, you know, count as one towards your, I'm making this number up, your one hundred cases that you're allotted to have throughout the year. They, you, every court can say, we're going to say that public disturbance is only worth point five of a, you know, of a weighting system, and a DUI maybe is worse one or one point five or something like that. So it's, they want to put limits on how many cases public defenders or any defender can have in a given year, but they are, but you are allowed to rank basically the severity of the crime and how much weight that goes towards your total caseload for the year. So I think with what the Supreme Court has done, public defender costs around the state, and certainly in every court in this county, have gone up somewhat based on that case weighting system and the limitations that are going to be imposed upon public defenders. That's the rationale, but just generally, I would say that Mr. Clark, Mr. Embiid, do a good job.
I got one question. Figure four-point-one-zero. And this is just because I need to be educated a little more on this. It says if the defendant failed to appear, that the public defender will continue.
Four-point-ten, if the defendant has failed to appear in court as ordered and more than four months have elapsed, therewithout the defendant having appeared in court, the public defender representation shall continue, and they should be treated as new appointment. So four-point-ten says that if somebody comes to court and the judge determines that they do qualify for a public defender, we'll stick on Mr. Clark, he is appointed to represent that client, that defendant escogs and runs away, there's a warrant issued for their arrest, that warrant remains outstanding for four months or more. Mr. Clark can then withdraw from the case and close his file and be done with it. Who knows? Maybe one day later, maybe five years later, when that person next appears in court after being picked up by that warrant, that, that, if that person again qualifies for a public defender, and if Mr. Clark is appointed again, then that will be treated as a new case, and he will get paid again.
Again.
Yes. That's what four-point-ten says.
That's what it says, okay.
Anyone got anything else? I'll make a motion to approve the public defender contract removal for Embiid and J. Clark.
A second to that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the public defender contract with J. Embiid and J. Clark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, Resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-one-seven, yearly renewal of interlocal agreement, Winlock Invader Site Sir Inspection Services. City of Winlock, Washington, Resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-one-seven, a resolution of the City of Winlock, Washington, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the City of Vader and the City of Winlock for wastewater treatment plant testing services, authorizing Vader to execute said interlocal agreement, and providing for separability and establishing an effective date. Now, this says site server, and this says testing.
Oh, Jill changed it to match the same as the Toledo agreement.
That's fine, but those are two separate things. I'm sorry I didn't catch it earlier.
This is all gonna be included in the budget by next year.
So it's if Vader needs additional assistance, then we would go and assist them?
Right. I, I, I read in here that we do have the manpower, so it's not gonna put us out or anything like that.
What happens is, the other municipalities around here, they, like Vader or Toledo, they only have typically one person that does this, usually an helper. And so if that person wants to go on vacation for a couple of weeks, take any of their overtime or any of their vacation time, they don't have anybody certified to watch it for them. That's why they would contract with us, so that Rodney can go over and oversee that for them, so, so folks can take some of their vacation time. But the problem here is, this is, these are two different things.
We need to, we're at the table this until next meeting. I'll make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to table the ILA with Vader till the next meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, nineteen, update to City of Winlock nonsufficient or return fund policy. We spoke about this in the last two meetings. In the red, you see the proposed language. I think that's a bit clearer.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the language?
No.
If we change it to the return utility payments must be paid in full, including the return payment fee prior to the regular utility billing date of the twentieth. If return payment is received after the due date, it must be paid in full within twenty-four hours of notice. There is door hanger and/or other form of communication, or arrangements made with the city treasurer, or the service will be locked until paid in full, except in accordance with House Bill thirteen-twenty-nine, past April twenty-twenty-three, and moratorium on residential watershed shut-off for inability to pay during weather service heat-related warning or alert, or take precedence. All non-utility return payments must be paid in full, including the return payment fee, within twenty-four hours of notice, any official communication from the city official, or arrangements with the city treasurer to avoid further collection proceedings. Any questions regarding it?
I'll make a motion to approve the update to the City of Winlock nonsufficient or refunded, return, refund policy.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the updated nonsufficient or return fund policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-eight, ordinance one-one-eight-nine, City Administrator, City of Winlock, Washington, ordinance number one-one-eight-nine, and ordinance of the City of Winlock, Washington, creating the Office of City Administrator, enacting rules and regulations concerning the appointment, duties, authority, and policies of the City Administrator, creating a new section two-point-one-zero-point-zero-six-zero of the Winlock Municipal Code, and providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
So in here, we also have to update L. And correct me if I'm wrong, but so it's down at the bottom paragraph of L, we have two, instead of discharge, it's LOE, right? The City Administrator, four to five vote, and then we'll take out the without the mid- and then we'll take out the, without the majority consent of the council, such as consent to be required of the council until such time as a new mayor takes office by an elected or appointed. And then we revert back to section C. Basically that just takes the mayor pro temp as the mayor role and keeps it the same as what the mayor would be, because we can't give the mayor pro temp a different outcome as what the mayor would do. Because this section was saying that the mayor pro temp would have a three to five vote instead of a four to five vote, so we're just making them the same language.
Also, in that particular one in L, it's, I didn't quite understand when it said shouldn't the mayor pro temp should not have the authority to discharge the city admin, which there wouldn't be a city admin because he would take the pro temp place, right?
No, because like, if we had a city admin right now and mayor, the mayor left, I would be taking over the meetings, you know?
Oh, someone other than the city admin?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because it, it said that the city admin would fill in the position. And that's, that's what kind of threw me off.
I mean, they could.
The thought process here, I see where you're going. So if, if I was to hypothetically resign right now, Jeremy would be, as mayor pro temp would step in, right? His, his title would be mayor pro temp, he wouldn't be actually the mayor until you guys appointed him mayor. In this situation, it's the end of the year, you wouldn't do so, you would just wait till January one, when the new mayor came in. But point being is if this was in the middle of the year, then you could appoint him and change the title from pro temp to mayor. What they're saying is as pro temp mayor.
Yep.
To answer your question, we'll all start from the beginning. So section C says there's three ways a city manager can be removed from office. The city manager may be removed from office at any time without cause by the mayor, subject to council confirmation, and without cause takes a four-fifth vote of the council. The city administrator, that's one way. The city administrator may be removed from office at any time with cause by the mayor, period. And the third way, without the consent of the mayor, the city council on their own may remove the mayor with the unanimous, or excuse me, may remove the city administrator with the unanimous votes. So three ways that the city administrator can be removed, without cause, with cause, or by the city council. The loophole kind of here, the, the error, is when you turn to page five of six, section L, when there is a vacancy in the mayor's office, so there isn't one right now, and that's when the mayor pro temp steps in in the meantime until somebody's appointed as mayor. It says that the mayor pro temp can fire the city administrator and only have a majority vote of the council, so three fifths. So it creates a situation where somebody who is not even elected to be the mayor in the first place can step in and make a drastic change to city government. So, but what's being proposed here is that if there is a city, if there's a mayor that has ceased to have office and the mayor pro temp steps in, that mayor pro temp has the same authority to discharge or remove a city administrator just as the mayor had in section C. So the amendment is to match up L with C.
Right.
And then the other question was, so in that event where there is no longer a mayor and there is not anybody that's appointed as mayor pro temp, it does not say that the city administrator steps into that role. It just says that the city administrator in that case would report directly to the city council until there is a mayor or a mayor pro temp or an executive of the city. Hope that makes sense.
Uh huh.
Okay, I must, I must. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one one eight nine, as amended.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one one eight nine, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-one, ordinance one one nine zero, approval of final twenty twenty-six budget. Any questions regarding the twenty twenty-six budget?
I wanna thank Joe, you saw your hard work in this and all the councils for helping put all the ordinance and all the budget stuff together and going over all this stuff.
I got you. And thanks for always being available.
Yep, it's, it's not easy and I, you know, a lot of people don't understand how much work goes into putting this budget together. The department heads for learning over the years, you know, we've been doing this, this way for six years and the department heads are learning and, you know, taking pride in their, doing their budgets and stuff, you know, and it's come a long way.
I wanna thank Jill.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Jill's done a ton of work and has taken quite a bit of assumptive abuse lately.
Yes.
For stuff that folks don't understand. Absolutely. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one one nine zero.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number one one nine zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's pass it. Twenty-two, ordinance number one one nine one. Ordinance, city of Winlock, Washington, ordinance number one one nine one. An ordinance of the city of Winlock, Washington, amending sections of Winlock municipal code, chapter two point one zero, providing for removal of the city clerk and city treasurer, amending sections of ordinance numbers one one zero three and one one zero two as necessary and providing for severability and establishing an effective date. The differences proposed here are similar to a neighboring state in which if someone was dismissed without cause, there would be a severance equal to nine months of salary. That would be the big difference here in the amendment. Also, it would be a majority of the council confirmation for termination. Of course, with cause is a different story.
Which is the same with a lot, almost all the positions, it's to, I don't wanna say protect, but it's to ensure that unfairness is being done, you know? Just try to keep everything fair throughout the whole city.
Well, these individuals are not under the protection of the union.
Right.
And/or should they be actually in this situation?
Right.
This, this previous council and some members of this council worked hard to get us to this point.
Yeah, it took a while.
But during times of turnover, there can be things politically that happen that are sometimes unwarranted. And so that's, that's why these things are done.
I make a motion to approve ordinance eleven ninety-one. I second that.
I have a motion and a second, second to approve ordinance one one nine, is it one? All those in favor? Any opposed? Ordinance passes. Twenty-three, procurement of police vehicle, Peoria Ford. This is a twenty twenty-four Explorer police center sector.
I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Does this price include all everything being outfitted for you or?
Really, except for public stickers?
Mostly.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't include stickers for the vehicle and it doesn't include a pretty, or, or radar, but we're gonna put one of our radar radars in it.
Which is usually pretty typical.
Yeah. The Peoria Ford does not charge tax to us, so we will pay them and then have, when we license it in Lewis County, we'll pay this county tax rate on it.
What are you gonna do, you're not on a brand new car?
What's that?
What are you gonna do? You're not gonna know how to act.
It's, it's gonna be an odd feeling to get into something and just be so confident that it's.
Yeah, and to that point, the, the original Explorers that were bought, just prior to my time here, they were state patrol surplus vehicles and they served us very well.
Yeah.
And at the time they were, I think those first ones cost sixty-five hundred bucks, seven thousand, something like that. Since then, state patrol and pretty much every other department has started running these patrol vehicles and just like we did until wheels fall off. Prior, what was it, the, the trooper for turning them in at like sixty or seventy, something like that?
No, the, the troopers were turning them in at like a hundred and forty-ish. Now I think they're running them into ground.
Yep.
Till they're not surplusable. Well, I mean, they're certainly surplusable, but not, not to some other agencies.
Well, and like some of them, we got, I think one of them we got just like sixty thousand miles on it.
Those were like federal GSA returns.
Taurus.
Yeah, the Taurus. Also, they become by hand more expensive.
Long story short, they're just not available anywhere. I wish they were, but.
We have definitely done us well.
Do we, are we getting any kind of warranty instead of warranty?
Three-year, thirty-six dog model, five-hundred K powertrain.
It comes with the full membership warranty.
The good thing about this is it's available now. We don't have to wait, we don't have to order it. You know, we got actually kind of a little lucky.
It's a, it's a demo vehicle that Systems for Public Safety built in conjunction with Peoria Ford. So they built it to show, to use as a demo in their showroom and say, this is what we can do. So it's all, it's all put together. They sell their demos. If, if somebody's in a pinch, kind of like we are, they'll, they'll sell their demo and just go without it.
Nice.
Yeah, it's, uh, definitely not gonna be cheaper, but at this rate we're spending far too much keeping the ones that we have on the road, unfortunately.
I think we, we just surplus one for the cause of it, would have been a ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollar rebuild of it and I, I don't see the reason to put ten to fifteen thousand dollars into a car that's got a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. My truck just came out of the shop with a five thousand dollar bill. The Toledo, uh, Charger, it just went in for a seven hundred dollar brake job. We're, we're spending considerable amounts of money on, I'll keep on older vehicles, hoping to try and mitigate some of that with newer vehicles.
Yeah, and it, I mean, just simple repairs are just outrageous anyway. A lot of people just don't understand how to receive it, you know, and it adds up quick.
So what you're saying is we need to invest in our own mechanic?
It's costing more to maintain what we have than it would be to buy this.
Yeah.
And that's not a good financial situation.
Well, I was at a bank today and I was a veteran, said all the cool cop stuff and everything was sixty to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Everything in the whole parking lot.
What my hope is, is to invest in, I mean, moving forward, invest in these newer police vehicles, run them to a certain point and if we're gonna keep them, we make the decision then to keep them running on the ground. Or vice versa, we do what Napoland has done in the past, run them until they have sixty, sixty-five thousand miles on it and then sell them, roll that money into your next car.
You know, it, it's been working for them, it worked for them in Toledo, you know, and so a program that we've worked very hard to try to get to, you know, and so this is just another step in that system.
And to be blatantly honest, right now we're running my truck and two Toledo police vehicles.
Yeah.
We have surplus three of the Explorers and we have one Taurus left. And it's, it's in the same ballpark as the three that we just surplus, it's just the best of the three that we, of the four that we had. So realistically, what we're doing right now is we're running one reliable Winlock-owned police vehicle and supplementing it with two Toledo Chargers. It's not a good position or a good look for us to be in.
I know what the mileage is on this.
I think it's like seven hundred-ish.
Seven hundred.
I think that, I don't have it with me, but I think in the packet that I gave to you, it had a mileage thing on it.
John, I think, I guess some of the stuff Jill gave me and I just made comments with it, sorry.
Yeah, I know, it was a, I think that was the number.
I think it was seven hundred something.
Okay.
But the, and then they, they also said that regardless of how many miles it has on it right now, the manufacturer warranty kicks in with whatever it has on it now, two, two plus whatever their original manufacturer warranty is. So that seven hundred miles is added to the top of whatever that is. Because the vehicle's never been sold or listed for sale. It's just Peoria Ford owns it, SPS built it, and it's, it wasn't for sale. And it's, I, I don't even know if it's still actually technically listed for sale right now, but they do sell them.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the police vehicle from Peoria Ford. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Explorer from Peoria Ford in the amount of, is this total, sell total correct? Minus tax?
Minus tax, yes.
The amount of seventy-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and eighty-three cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, leak adjustment, Delphina Boozman, in amount of forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. I don't think he's not here. There's a leaky center. Radio filling center box, calling, turning meter back on. Meter no longer spinning. I can't really, to be honest, read this.
It was bad.
Purchase, or they're all that great. I mean, you can kind of see it.
Dig a meter two, exposed water. Leak replaced, broken, fitting, two hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the leak adjustment for forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the water leak adjustment for Delphina Boozman in the amount of forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, PPC Solutions Inc. Security Services Agreement. This is something that the, the judge and I have discussed off and on throughout the year. We, we have ourselves a situation during court where Sergeant Jackson is primarily here during that time. And it causes problems if he gets called out. And we have a courtroom full of people that, you know, and depending on what happens, somebody could be disgruntled and there's nobody here for security. They are, their regular rate is thirty-nine fifty-eight an hour, which is far less than having an officer here. Obviously, the officer can show up if somebody needs remanded and taken into custody and transported. However, this allows somebody, an armed security guard here to be here the entire time the court's here, regardless if somebody in Winlock or Toledo needs help. I think it's a, a, a very smart thing to do for everybody's safety involved within the officer and the, and the judge and all the other people in the room at the time.
Well, like I said, it definitely helps out and definitely helps the budget out as well.
What's their timeframe look like?
Because they say it's thirty-eight an hour?
Uh, yeah, thirty-nine fifty-eight an hour.
And armed guard? What does that?
They're the same exact folks that they're using at the county.
Long as like, at any, any day with, with.
Oh, they're just gonna be here for court.
Play a month, Thursday.
Second, fourth, Thursday.
Five hours tops, five hours.
Twelve hundred to sixteen thirty.
Just like in the beginning, break down the end.
Okay. And of course, these overtime hours, they're not gonna really apply for us because we're not gonna have to work on holidays and things of that nature, so. Anyways, safety-wise, for less than forty dollars an hour, it's, I think it's a better wise thing to do.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the PPC Solutions Inc. Security Service Agreement.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the PPC Solutions Inc. Security Services Agreement for court. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? A second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor? I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any adjourned?